So now we're looking at what is a disciple? I want to ask a question. Who of, are you a disciple? If you're a disciple here, just put your hand up. Very good. Very good. It's, it's great to have. Yeah, you can give the notes out, yeah. Thank you. You can give the notes out for, for, for this. But it's important to understand the word disciple. And I think as a church, it is something that probably has come a bit more recent into our radio or come back into the church. And I think there is an importance that is being put to these words now. You want to pass me on? There's an, there's an importance that is coming back into the, um, into the life of the church now on what a disciple is. You know, but I was, I was reading through the, um, the Bible. I was looking, doing some, um, searches and I found that there were only two times in the Old Testament that the word disciple is mentioned. Only two times. And I was surprised actually to imagine that the word disciple was only used twice. And even when you read it, it's not really, um, uh, used in that sense of what we understand disciple to mean now. You know that it wasn't a word that obviously, um, God was introducing into the church in the Old Testament. But then in the New Testament, from when Jesus came, they had, there are 294 times it is said in the four Gospels and in the Book of Acts. 294 times it is mentioned and most of the time is by Jesus. It's by Jesus introducing it. And I, and I just thought really that means there was something about disciple, the word disciple that Jesus was introducing into the life of the God story. So when we look at the whole Bible, the God story of the Bible, you know, you think of the Old Testament, the Christians in the Old Testament were the Jews. They were the Jews and they were the Israelites, you know? And they, their, their way of following Christ was, uh, following God was to obey the law. They needed to obey the law. So they were, um, they, they were told the law, they were given the laws. And as long as they kept those laws, they could feel like they were, um, uh, faithful Jews or faithful followers of God. When they did not follow the law, you know, they, um, God will, will talk about them walking away from him and there will be punishment to that. But then Jesus introduces this word disciple. And I think I was, as I was reflecting on that, I was thinking, actually that word disciple, maybe he brought it in to help the Gentiles, to help us to understand what it means to be, to become a follower of Jesus or a follower of God. What does it mean for us? Because we're not born Jews. We're not, um, people who would have classed ourselves as God's chosen people. You know, we are, um, grafted into his, his, his life and into, into the Christian faith. But Jesus talks about it so many times that I think it is very important for us to understand what that means and for us to, to, to determine in our hearts how good we are or how much, how, how we pursue that, you know, being a disciple of Jesus. The Greek word for disciple is math- mathethis. I don't know if I'm saying that right. Um, it's in your notes anyway, it's spelt right. Um, which means one who learns instruction from another. One who learns instruction from another. And don't you think it's beautiful that Jesus came down from heaven? He came down to earth. He presented himself in physical form. You know, I was speaking to someone, um, uh, I'm not meant to preach, I meant to teach, but it's, it's always hard to, to, uh, um, I, I was, I was speaking to someone in the prison and I was talking to him about being a Christian. And he said, you know what? If God could only just show himself to me, if he could, you know, if I could see him in, in the flesh or I could, you know, that I would believe. And I was thinking, well, he has done that, you know, he has, he has calmed down. And he's, J- Jesus has come and he has come in the flesh, you know that. But when you think about that definition, one who learns instruction from another, you know, it just means that actually there's someone that we can walk in close proximity with. It's not someone that is from a distance, how God would have related to the Israelites from a distance, you know, and tell Moses to go and speak to them. And every time he came, there always seemed to be a big, um, um, roar or, or, or something that, you know, the Israelites would tremble. Actually, God wanted to relate with us in a, in a one-on-one way. And you know that it's, it's so important. They, they says there, it is, the same word was used for an apprentice to a tradesman. You can't be an apprentice of someone that you don't see, of someone that you don't, um, walk alongside. You can't be an apprentice of someone or, or in a trade that you're not part of. Every Christian is called to be a disciple of Jesus. And this means they will follow Jesus and put the claims of Jesus first in their lives, regardless of the cost to themselves. So a Christian disciple is a person who is determined to follow Jesus Christ with the desire to learn from him and live according to his example. So to learn from him and live according to his example. I wonder if we can open with some of us can, um, read those scriptures there. Um, so if one person takes 1 Peter, um, 2 and verse 21, anyone want to take and, and open 1 Peter 2:21? And then another person can take John. So there are, um, six, six scriptures, I think there. It would be great if six people can just pick one and, um, we can read those scriptures out. Anyone at 1 Peter 2:21? Yes? Amen. He's our example and we must follow. That's a powerful word, must follow in his steps. Let's read John 8, John 8, verse 31 to 32. Yeah, thank you. Amen. If you hold to my disciples, you are, um, to my word, you are my disciples. Then to Timothy 2, verse 2, yeah. Amen. Amen. You've heard me teach these things. Now teach them to someone else. That's all being a disciple. Next one, Luke 6, verse 40. Hallelujah. Everyone who is perfectly trained, there is training in the Christian faith to become like the master, to become like the teacher. And it's great that we're here today. We're here to be trained to become like him. And then Colossians, chapter 3, and verse 17. Amen. Amen. Do it as a representative of the Lord Jesus, giving thanks through him. And then 1 John 2, and verse 6. 1 John 2 and 6, anyone there? If we say that we have fellowship with him and do not work with him, we lie. Wow. So we see those, those scriptures tell us in a way that so very, very few of them actually mention the word disciple there. But they teach what it means to be a disciple. So they are, they are, they're telling us what it means to be a disciple. You know, um, I was, I was looking at the word disciple and the word disciple, I don't know if we have any slides there. The word disciple seems to be in the middle of two definitions that we can look at. So we, we, we look, we, we talked about the Greek understanding of disciple. But the word disciple, which many people, um, talk about is the word follower. You know, and I, and I sense that that is the word in the middle, um, of, of that. But then when you look behind disciples, so, um, the, the root word for what disciple comes from is called de- de- um, discipleus, which means student. So we are students who become disciples, who become followers. But then there is a, there is a further word that gets its root from disciple and that's discipline. Discipline then gets its root from disciple. And when you think of discipline, discipline has a lot of meanings. But I just want to use the meaning when we talk about studying. So when you, um, go to, um, university and you, um, and you're, or you're in a job application, sometimes you're asked, what is your area of discipline? They are trying to find out where, what area you studied, what area it might be. Oh, I studied biological sciences, that's my area of discipline. Or law, that's my area of discipline. So there is, to become a, to, um, to get to that point of discipline, we need to be disciples who are students. And I was just thinking about that, actually. That means that Jesus is saying that there is, so to become, to have a discipline, there must be a curriculum that we go through. There is a set curriculum that every, um, every, every course says that you need to know, you need to know these things before you can graduate as a medical doctor. If you went to the GP or you went to a surgeon and they said, you know what? I didn't go to university to study surgery. I just, you know, um, I just assumed that I know it, you know? And I'm just coming here to come and operate on you, um, not having any, um, previous, um, training on that. You would not agree, would you? You would not, you'd say, actually, no, I, I would rather die of the illness than die of you cutting me up. You know? Because there's an expectation that if somebody graduates from that university saying that they are a doctor, they have gone through a learning, a learning, a systematic learning that is, um, an expected outcome, which they graduate then as that, um, um, course. And I was now thinking that, did Jesus leave it vague for us? Did Jesus leave what disciple, what it means to be a follower of him? Did he leave that vague? Or were there specific things he said to us? And I've, in the notes, I've put five things that I believe are sort of core things that Jesus was saying to us to be his disciples. So when we look at the curriculum of what it means to be a disciple of Jesus, coming out at the other end and saying, actually, I'm a disciple. What do, what are some key things that, um, Jesus was saying? And the first thing is a disciple is a person who lives continually by the word of Jesus. A disciple is a person who lives continually by the word of Jesus. Let's look at that scripture in John, chapter 8, and verse 31 to 32. It says in the NIV, it says, "To the Jews who had believed him." So he's talking to believers now. He's talking to Christians. He says, "Jesus said, if you hold to my teachings, you are really my disciples." If you hold to my teachings. There's another version that says, you know, the New King James says, "If you abide in my word." If you abide in my word. The NLT says, "You are truly my disciples if you remain faithful to my teachings." So the first thing that we need to think about is actually to be a disciple, we need to be one who continually lives in the word of God. We need to live in the word of God. How many of us know everything Jesus said by heart? So how many of us believe that we would know everything Jesus said before we die? So there's a need to keep learning for the rest of our life, isn't there? We will always be learning and growing and abiding in his word. Because it is not, it's not something that we get to and we say and take and say, actually, we have, we have learnt all of that. We'll become like the Pharisees. When the man came to Jesus and said, "What must I do?" And Jesus says, you know, "Keep all the commandments." And he says, "I've done all that." So he felt like he had accomplished, you know, all of that. And then Jesus says, "Go and sell all your things and follow him." And he's like, "Oh no, that was during the commandments." You know, that, you know, that's a completely different. But Jesus, he never sets the bar where it is, you know, we, we can come to that point and say, actually, we don't need to read the Bible anymore because we know it. You know, I, I heard a story of somebody that, um, was given a Bible and she said, "No, I don't need that. I read it once." So she doesn't need the Bible anymore because she has read it once. Actually, we will always be reading, we'll always be abiding in his word. They are not only people who follow occasional words of the master, but rather people who commit themselves to follow through the teachings of the master in a disciplined and committed way. I wonder if we can just say one line of something that you know Jesus said? One command or one word that it comes to your mind right now of something Jesus said? Yeah? Yeah? Very good. Thanks, Brian. Yeah? Anyone else? Anything else? Ask and you'll receive, yeah? The sheep will hear my voice and they'll follow me, yes? Yeah? Sorry, let me, yeah? Yeah, I'm the light of the world, yes? Yeah? I am the way, the truth and the life. There, Jesus said so many things. Nearly every circumstance we find ourselves in life, there is something, there's a word of life that Jesus has said for us. I am the way, the truth and the life. I heard someone say, those, those three are systematic. He's the way. When you find him as the way, you become a believer. And then you know him as the truth. You can only get life when you know him as the truth, when you learn the word of God. That's why it says, "If you, if you abide in my word, you are truly my disciples." And, and, and then it goes on to say, "You will, um, uh, you will know the truth and the truth will make you free." It's the truth you know that makes you free. So that's why we need to know what Jesus is saying to us. I put there, the main thought behind discipleship is not one of inspiration, but instruction. I know we love to be inspired. We love to come to church to be inspired. We love to, you know, live motivated. But actually, how many of us have studied for years? At some point, you stop being inspired about that studying. But you just have to be, finish it. You just have to dig deep. You just keep on going because you want to accomplish something. And that's the way it is to be a disciple. It's not always that we are inspired, but it is instruction there. The second thing I've said, um, I've put down is, a disciple is a person who commits his life completely to the master. A disciple is a person who commits his life completely to the master. In Luke, chapter 14, and verse 26 to 27. That scripture is not in your notes, but you can write it in on your notes. I'd not put it down when I sent that out. Um, but it says, "If anyone comes to me and does not hate father and mother, wife and children, brothers and sisters, yes, even their own life, such a person cannot be my disciple. And whoever does not carry their cross and follow me cannot be my disciple." Those are strong words, aren't they? They are strong words. I would encourage you to go back and read it, put it in the context and look at it. Uh, Jesus is not saying you need to hate the people. He's not saying, uh, go to your wife and say, "I hate you because I'm following Jesus." Or, "I hate my parents because I'm following Jesus." That's not what Jesus is saying. What Jesus is saying is, "If you don't put me first above everything else, then you cannot be my disciple." If you do not take up your cross and follow me. And I was saying, every one of us, our crosses are all different. They will all look different. But if we don't take up that cross, we cannot be. This commitment should be total, but it is not just a commitment to anyone. It's a commitment to a loving master who has no self-interest, but rather is concerned for our total welfare and growth in God. So we are making that commitment to someone who loves us, who wants us to love our parents, who wants us to love our wives, who wants us to love everyone around us. But he's saying, "Are you ready to put me first? Because I'll teach you how to love them." And then the third thing in the curriculum of discipleship is a disciple is one who lives a fruit-bearing relat- who lives in a fruit-bearing relationship with Jesus. John, chapter 15, and verse 4 to 5. It says, "Remain in me and I also remain, as I also remain in you. No branch can bear fruit by itself; it must remain in the vine. Neither can you bear fruit unless you remain in me. I am the vine, you are the branches. If you remain in me and I in you, you will bear much fruit. Apart from me, you can do nothing." There is fruit to be born as a disciple. It's not just, um, it's, it's not just work, work, learn, learn, you know, study, study. There is actually fruit to be born. You know, when, um, um, someone will, will, will on more writes, "Our union with Christ makes possible a life through which others can be saved." When a tree is full, is so full of sap that it can no longer hold it, the result is fruit. When a Christian is full of Christ, others see him and hear about him and are then spiritually reborn into the kingdom of God. Thus, new believers are one fruit of discipleship. Without this sort of fruit-bearing in our lives, the kingdom of God is not, will not be expanded and the body of Christ will not grow. And then the fourth curriculum is, "A disciple is one who is committed to unconditional sacrificial love for others." Who is committed to unconditional sacrificial love for others. In John 13, and verse 34 and 35, it says, "A new command I give you. Love one another as I have loved you. So you must love one another. By this everyone will know that you are my disciples for you love one another." There's a command there to love one another. If we search our lives and we see that we're not loving, we need to check, uh, our commitment to being a disciple of Jesus. This is no ordinary human love, but the love which God has demonstrated towards us. And it's called agape. That word, agape, is, um, the, the Greek word for love, selfless love. Love that is not based on what this person has done to deserve my love. I give it anyway. I love anyway because he loves me. And then the fifth and final, uh, um, principle is, a disciple is one who is dedicated to the fulfillment of Christ's commission. Matthew 18, Matthew 28, 18 to 20. Then Jesus came to them and said, "All authority in heaven and on earth has been given to me. Therefore, go and make disciples of all nations, baptizing them in the name of the Father and of the Son and of the Holy Spirit, and teaching them to obey everything I have commanded you. And surely I am with you always to the very end of the age." The goal of our discipleship should be to win other disciples, not just converts. And it is part of the discipling process. It's part of us becoming a mature disciple to make other disciples. If we cease, if we look in our lives and we see that we're not making other disciples, we need to check how, or what sort of disciples we are. Because that's an instruction and it's part of our disciples. So when I said at the beginning, who, which of us is a disciple? And many of us, most of us, all of us put our hands up. We need to check our lives and see, are these things in there? Are those things there building up that will help us to, in a way, recognize what is the curriculum of Jesus saying for that? So we're going to go into our groups in a moment. And, um, we're going to read those two, um, great commission passages. And the group leaders will guide you through some of the discussions. Um, but just looking at this whole subject of what is a disciple? What is a disciple? And I want to encourage you to engage in that. You know, what, what is your understanding of being a disciple? How can we be better disciples? How can we be faithful to what God has called us to do? When he says, "Go and make disciples." We need to understand what it means when we say we want to make a disciple. What does making a disciple look like? How, what is the outcome? How do we know at the end that we have made a disciple? If we don't know what a disciple really is, then we can't know whether we have made one or not. So I hope that you, I pray that you, it will be a blessing to you as you discuss that. Um, and there's a diagram that the, the, um, on your sheets that the, um, table leaders will guide you through at some point on discussing that as well to, and filling it. And then when we come back, we'll discuss some of those points. And if you have any, um, questions or debates on your table, it would be great to just, you know, get some of those feedback when we, um, come back together as a group and we can learn and grow together. Amen. Amen. So just, what I'd love to do is to hear some, um, feedback on the diagram. If we just look at that now and just see, you know, some of the, some of the conversations that happened, you know, in our groups. Um, maybe each table, we can go around and if you give two of some of the things that you put in the diagram and maybe just a little bit of, just a short feedback on why you thought those two are, um, relevant. Maybe we'll start, you want, you guys want to go first or are you okay to do that? Yeah? Yeah, Marie, you seem to be eat. Do you want to share that or do you have something? Yeah?
An unbeliever, I believe that there's also, start off with a seed being sown somewhere by someone somehow. And, um, that's where we start off rather than straight to acceptance. So that was one of the discussions we were having.
That's fine. Very good. So sowing a seed, seeds being sown there in the heart of an unbeliever. Yeah, that's the process of discipleship starts from seed sowing, you know, that's, yeah? Anyone else? Anything else? Yeah?
You got to disciple others. I think, yeah, that's the main thing. If you are a mature disciple, to disciple others, to come, to bring others into the church and to believe the word of God.
Very good. So, you know, we're looking at the, looking at the mature disciple is someone who is, I guess, fulfilling the Greek commission and saying, actually, we'll make more disciples and make other disciples. Um, let me come to this table then. Two things.
Um, yeah. After you be, after you receive the gospel, we talked about, um, developing a prayer time and studying the word so you can grow in your maturity, you continue to, um, grow in your relationship with God. So, yeah, that's key.
Very good, yeah? So growing in your prayer life and your study life, that's great, yeah? Good. Anyone else?
Uh, one of the things, uh, we discussed about was that after you've developed a relationship with God, you start to be filled with the spirit. You start speaking in tongues, speaking like a new man, like as if you've been born again and something has come over you, which is the spirit of God, who, who teaches you stuff and helps you to speak in a new language with him. who, who teaches you stuff and helps you to speak in a new language with him.
Very good. Yeah? So that's a great, a great step for a disciple. And I think it's important, you know, being full of the Holy Spirit. Let's not neglect, let's not think that it's not important. Actually, it is. Jesus thought it was important for his disciples to be full of the Holy Spirit. So we need to see that as very important as well to, for us. Let me come to this table now. Anything else to add to that? Two things. Anyone? Any comment? Anyone? Any comments at all? Yeah, you've got loads written down.
Pray and fast. Yeah, that's good. As a disciple, we need to be people who are ready to pray and fast. Yeah? That's good.
That's fine. This table, anything from here? Anything else to add to that? A mouthful.
I've got things like nurturing, being nurtured and learning the Bible and all about Jesus. And because the book, the Gospel of John was something that I was taught to read because it talks, he speaks a lot about his relationship with Jesus.
Importing truth to other disciples, other people. Yeah, teaching others to. Yeah. Very good. Yeah? Would you want to say something?
Yeah, it's commitment and love. You were saying that the two come hand in hand. If you love Jesus, you'll be committed to things that he loves. So it's another sign of maturity.
Very good. Very good. So the, I mean, there's, there are lots of points there. I know there are only a few boxes there that, you know, we could probably have a lot more things to fill those boxes with. But there are actually steps that we can take, you know, and I'm sure some of us around our tables that would have probably realized, actually, maybe I've not, I've not taken that step. I've not learnt that step or I've not grown to that level. There's something I need to grow still in. You know, it might be obeying the word of God, you know, because the Bible, you know, the great commission, the scripture we read, they teach them to obey my commands. Obedience is very important, you know, that's, are we obeying all God's commands? If there are some things that we are not obeying, then there, there's still more to learn. There's still more to grow in. And there's still more to, to get to. Just looking at the last question that we looked at, you know, what are some things that make it difficult for us to be disciples? I just wonder if anybody wants to just say something out. What makes it difficult for us to be disciples? Sorry? Busyness of life. Very good. Yeah? The busyness of life. And what does Jesus say about that? You know, so if, if we say busyness of life makes us not be a disciple, are there, is there anything that Jesus addresses, you know, that can, can help us to, to think, actually, how do we overcome this by using Jesus's words? Seek first the kingdom of God and his righteousness and everything else will be added. We are seeking first the things that will be added rather than him. That's what's making us busy because we're pursuing the additions rather than seeking him first, you know. So if we actually take the Bible and think, Jesus, I want to obey your word. Your word says, seek first the kingdom of God. So I'm going to relieve myself from the business that I'm finding myself in because I want to pursue after you. Do you think God will be faithful to add those things that actually we're pursuing? He will be. He will be faithful. Anything else? Yeah, AB? Yeah? Yeah, that's so true. You know, that's, and it's, it's, it's realizing that sometimes we might not hit the mark, but actually God, God, Jesus doesn't leave his disciples to go. You know, whenever he saw something that they, they were not hitting, he, he would say, you know, you need, you need to, he would rebuke them or he would, you know, encourage, why, why do you not have enough faith? You know, that's believed. He, he will never say, oh, you know, taking part is okay. You know, that's like our world says today. You know, he always wanted us to become better. He wanted us to become there, he says, you, you are truly my disciples. There's, there's something about that pursuit that God wants us to have, you know, that's, and it's important to, to do that. We've been waiting for you guys for. You have missed all the conversations. Yes. Oh, yeah?
Being left alone when we talk about Jesus and believe in him and when we talk about it to our friends, they will make fun of it. I have experienced in India.
Yeah, that's a, that's a real, that can be a real challenge for us when we are afraid of rejection. And it can be a big, it can be a big hindrance to us being disciples. So when we talk about disciples, sometimes it's, we decide not to make other disciples. We decide not to vocalize our faith because we don't want to be rejected. We don't want to, you know, but do we know any scripture or anything Jesus has said that counters that? Do we have any words from Jesus that will help us to overcome that fear of rejection or, or things that we might? Yeah? Fantastic. Yeah? Very good. Take up your cross. Sometimes that might be our cross that we need to take up, you know, that's, that fear of, of rejection or shame might be a cross we need to take up. So we were just talking about some difficulties that we might find as, as believers really that, so what, what are some things that we find difficult in becoming a disciple? We'll take one more. Anyone else able to give one more? Jeff, yeah? 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 It's very true. Yeah. And I, I mean, if they, if they came to Christ after, you know, so if we're talking about marriage now, if you came to Christ after you've been married, that can be a challenge, you know, that's. But if you're not married, it's to encourage, to encourage you. That's why Jesus says, don't be unequally yoked. That's why the Bible says, don't be unequally yoked, because he can prevent you from being a faithful disciple to him. You know, but it's not just about marriage as well. It's about a lot of things, business. You know, not unequally yoked with business, even friends, friendships. When people say, my best friend is, and the person is not a believer, sometimes I wonder, wow, how do you guys work together? How do you have the same values? How do you have the same things to talk about? You know, there, there must be something there that is missing in the conversations. And you, do you leave that and do you leave that relationship encouraged? Or do you leave that relationship thinking about the world and thinking about all the things that, you know, you, you miss? Because actually, that's, that's the difficulty. We, we, iron sharpens iron. If the world is the one that you're sharpening yourself with, then there's a, there's a challenge. And we're going to just spend some time praying. For those that joined us, we talked about the diagram and we talked about some of the things in the boxes. I hope you are able to get to that in your groups anyway, to be able to talk about some of those things in the diagrams that that are steps to being a disciple. And, and next week, we're going to look at that again a bit more as well to, and just look a bit more in depth because it's important that we know this, we can define it. You know, someone on the table I was in said, you know, that we want to multiply ourselves. And then the question was, so what is, what, who are you? That you're multiplying? You know, that's the question. What, what is it in you? There are some disciples you don't want to multiply. You know, you don't really want another of that type of disciple really, because they are not really being a faithful disciple. So it's like, well, let's just have one of you. You know, let's look for someone that really we want to multiply, you know. So it's actually looking at ourselves and thinking, are we faithful disciples to be wanting to multiply ourselves, you know, that's? And I think it's important to do that. Promise, are you okay to calm down for last song? Yeah? Well, let's rise and have Martin, you want to say something? Yeah?
The most important thing about discipleship to me is not necessarily listening, speaking, doing. It's about being with. Simply being with. I was talking to somebody the other day and he was struggling, really struggling. Don't worry, he's not in this room. He was really struggling about what, why isn't God doing something? Why aren't you helping me? Why aren't you? I'm, you know, I'm a good disciple. I'm a good believer. I read my Bible. I, I pray every week, every day. I go to church as many times as I can do. And I said to him, just change your perspective. Don't be focused on what he can do for you. Just spend time with him. Just focus on him. Spend time with people. What you do together helps you grow. Doesn't matter what it is. It could be going for a walk. It could be going to the cinema. It could be having a meal. The important thing is that you're spending time with him.
Amen. Amen. So let's rise at our feet now. Let's just, in your own words, just commit and ask God, you know, he would give you a true picture of who he is, of who Jesus is. Because that's, that's our discipline. That's the area of study. That's where we, who we want to become. That's who we want to look like. You know, there are a lot of versions of Jesus sometimes that are presented to us that sometimes can warp our, our understanding of who he wants us to be as disciples. But let's ask him for his true perspective right now. Just in your own words, just say, Lord Jesus, help me to see you clearly, to know you, to, to know you in a deep way, that I would be a faithful disciple to you as I understand what it means, as I get to understand in a better way what it means. Help me to be Jesus. 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 Yes, Lord, as we look at this very important subject that you brought, oh God, that you mentioned, you talked about, you instituted, Lord, you, you started the school of discipleship, you started the whole concept of being a disciple. You started it all, oh God, and you commanded us to carry it on, oh God. You gave instructions about it. You gave very clear instructions, Lord, about what we were expecting a disciple to be, to look like, to do, Lord. And I pray, Spirit of God, that we will be intentional about it, oh God. We will be intentional when we feel like it and when we don't feel like it, Lord. I pray that you will help us, oh God, to be faithful in it, oh God, Lord, to be faithful in following after your word, following after your commands, that the next time we feel like we don't want to do what you've said, Lord, I pray that you remind us, oh God, that we are your disciples and we can't just skive in this area, but we need to be diligent in seeking after you, Lord. I pray that you will be glorified and lifted up, oh God, in our lives, Lord, in Jesus's name. Amen. Hallelujah.